Good evening. I now call the Board of Education regular meeting to order at 5:32. In the absence of Board Secretary Ridstrom, it's recommended that Director Nancy Humbles be appointed to serve as Board Secretary Pro Tem for this evening's board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Congratulations.
Thank you.
On to the approval of the agenda. You may notice item two under section VII of our Agenda for Administration, there's a resolution to construct two new elementary school buildings on the Hoover Elementary School and Van Buren Elementary School sites. This resolution was first considered and approved at the Board's special meeting, August 12th, 2024. After the August 12th meeting, it came to our attention that a question had been raised regarding the notice that the resolution would be considered at that special meeting. As a matter of clarification, therefore, we're once again considering this resolution and any public input about it. There have been no changes to the resolution itself, the recommendation concerning the resolution, or any of the facts and circumstances to the resolution. That being said, is there a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, October 14th, 2024, the Board of Education regular meeting as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
I'll signify by saying aye. President Garlock?
Director Humbles, have there been requests to address the Board this evening?
Yes, there has.
How many requests do we have?
We have three.
Thank you. With three speakers this evening, you'll each be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Director Humbles will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. If you have submitted a request to address the Board and choose to refrain from speaking in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between Board Directors and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This Board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the Board cannot address personnel and student matters. The Board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to state their names and addresses when called to the podium. Director Humbles, would you please call our first speaker?
The first person is Kevin Wymore.
Hello. Yes, my name is Kevin Wymore, and my address is 4501 Pineview Drive here in Cedar Rapids. Dear Superintendent Grover, members of the School Board, staff, and members of the public, thank you for letting me provide comment about my open meetings law complaint against your district regarding the August 12th School Board meeting. I will outlaw the, or excuse me, outline the events that led me to file the complaint with the Information Board, then I will offer my recommendations on how the Board might proceed. I hope you recognize the positive nature of my suggestions. I do believe they will help you deal with the level of mistrust that your own surveys have said that you may have earned. According to the Iowa Public Information Board, the first sentence deals with, of chapter 121, excuse me, says that the goal of the law is to guarantee through open meetings of governmental bodies that the basis and rationale of government decisions, as well as those decisions themselves, are easily accessible to the public. Section 21.4 says that government bodies are required to give adequate notice of the time, date, and place of a meeting, and post a tentative agenda. With respect, neither the easily accessible overarching goal, nor the posting of adequate notice were achieved before that August 12th special meeting. In other words, I was totally bereft of information when I came to the 5:30 special meeting, and I, I, I think that's just blatantly unacceptable. So, here's what happened. I first saw the tentative agenda notice on your kiosk, which is required, and the kiosk was, was in the right place, but the open meeting notice did not have a tentative agenda on it, and it never did until I got a copy of that agenda from one of the receptionists at the end of, after the meeting, actually. And so, when I saw the mistake on the open meetings notice, I did the obvious thing. I, I went to the receptionist on duty that afternoon and said, could I have an agenda? The receptionist unfortunately said, I don't know that we have one. So, when I did finally get the agenda at the start of the meeting, or roughly at the start of the meeting, I noticed a, a big item, not just a, you know, run-of-the-mill item. It said, called for approval to build two new elementary school buildings estimated to cost roughly $50 million. And, so let me offer some analysis here. The Iowa Newspaper Association says, in a public PSA sort of thing, they said, "You have a right to know how state and local governments spend your hard-earned tax dollars, and it's your responsibility to find out. Without public notice, you're left to guess how elected officials are spending your money." And let me underscore the, the large sum of money that apparently is at stake in that approved motion to put up two new buildings. Back in 2021, the Board approved a motion to start planning for a $50 million bond issue referendum. In other words, that bond issue, apparently to be funded with general obligation bonds, would have been put to a public vote. So contrast that with this poorly noticed, scantily attended August 12th meeting where, you know, surprise, we're, we've got a motion for $50 million in new spending. So I implored the Board to take these actions. I would suggest that you not approve the, the issue at hand regarding the-
Thank you, Mr. Wymore, your time is up. Mr. Wymore, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who is our next speaker?
Melanie Noesch.
My name is Melanie Noesch. I live at 2314 Beaver Avenue Southeast. Thank you all for your service and commitment to the Cedar Rapids schools, and for allowing me time to talk with you this evening. I've spent my lifetime working and advocating for young children, and as an early educator, I taught preschool, managed a childcare program, spent a lot of time in kindergarten classrooms, but the area of my career where I felt I had the most impact was as a professor of early childhood ed. I love sharing my passion and experience about young children with future early childhood teachers. I'm here to talk to you tonight about play, and the power of it in children's lives, and the policies and practices that can support young children's play in preschool, kindergarten, and maybe even a little room for play in the primary grades. When I talk about play, what do I mean? I mean child-initiated exploratory play in a classroom rich with materials. I mean teacher-guided experiential play and learning with a playful focus. A classroom busy with the hum of active, inquisitive, and playful children. I mean play that provides ample time in outdoors, using their bodies, and exploring nature. You might think of that as recess. And I don't mean, what I don't mean is play that is a free-for-all, with no guidance or limits, or teachers who watch kids play. In fact, I told my students if I ever heard them say that, I would come haunt them. They don't just watch. Why is play important to include in early childhood curriculum? For centuries, philosophers and educators have acknowledged the power of play in children's lives. Scientific studies over the last century continue to confirm what we know. The evidence about play research has taught us that children with rich play lives develop language skills, cognitive skills, social skills, and self-regulation that benefit them throughout their lives. Play provides mental health support, for us too, by the way, and play helps children develop strong and healthy bodies. Play helps children learn content in just about any discipline. Most every child, most everything I learned about dinosaurs, I learned from a child. College students who have been educated in pre-service programs often came back to me and shared their frustration once they became teachers. Instead of a classroom where teachers are engaged in active playful learning with young children, they may find themselves in a scripted, teacher-directed curriculum with little room for play. They wonder why all the decades of research on the importance of play are often ignored by leaders. Excuse me. The National Association for the Education of Children, the largest professional group of early educators in the U.S., describes both and thinking when working with young children. We need to include both high-quality play experiences with knowledgeable and playful teachers, and sometimes a more teacher-directed curriculum. But only focusing on didactic and teacher-directed instruction is a disservice to young children. It doesn't honor what we know about how children learn, and can actually be damaging. So what can you do, what I'm asking you to do? Establish policies and practices that acknowledge and hold room in the curriculum for young children's play. What will that take? It might mean you have to educate some administrators and teachers on what good play looks like and why it's important. It means allowing ample time in a daily schedule for frequent recess, but also for classroom play using play-based learning centers. It likely means providing teachers and schools with materials and resources to use in their playful exploration. And it might mean reviewing assessment practices and eliminating those that are inappropriate for young children. I'm a storyteller by nature, and if I had time, I would tell you lots of stories about play. I don't have time, so instead, I ask you to watch your favorite four, five, or six-year-old and see what they do in their play and what they're learning. As a lifelong educator, a mom who proudly raised her sons in the Cedar Rapids School District, and a member of the Cedar Rapids community, please develop policies that ensure that Cedar Rapids School District recognizes the rich evidence base supporting children's play, and that you create classrooms where play is valued. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Farrell.
Thank you so much for the time to speak with you tonight. My name is Christina Farrell. I live at 12021 First Street Southwest. I come to you with a lot of, wearing lots of hats and bringing a lot of different experiences. So I'm an alum of Jefferson High School. I graduated in '93. I'm a parent of a Wash alumni who graduated in 2020, and this year, I'm serving as an arts integration consultant for Johnson Steam Academy. In my professional world, I'm a teaching artist, and I'm a master teaching artist for the Wolf Trap Institute for Early Learning Through the Arts, and so I would really love to second what we just heard about play. That's my job. I also provide professional development for teachers and arts integration through the Kennedy Center, Turnaround Arts Program, and Lincoln Center Education. I have worked in 26 states in the United States. I travel for most of my work. I've served in public schools, charter schools, magnet schools. I've worked on reservations in rural communities, urban communities. I see a lot of models of teaching. And of course, all models have their pros and cons. There's always good things and bad things that come. So I am here as an arts advocate, but also as a high-quality learning advocate, a professional development coach for teachers. And I've been hearing from teachers and reading in the newspaper about the new magnet approach for the Cedar Rapids High Schools. And as an arts advocate, I, I have a lot of questions. So I'm here to make a statement, but also hoping that there'll be more information around the future of the arts programs in the high schools with this new model. So I have worked in many districts across the country in which the arts have become overlooked when new curricular approaches begin to change. They either become minimalized to the point where the program can no longer maintain its quality, or eliminated altogether, or in some cases, there's a fine arts magnet school in which all resources for the arts are moved to one building, leaving other schools in the district without access to those life-changing experiences that are essential for a well-rounded education. So I'm coming with a little bit of a, of a warning of, of things that I've seen in other districts. So in fact, my family moved here to Cedar Rapids in 2016, came back to this area because we lived in an area of Pennsylvania in which high-quality arts learning was isolated to one magnet school, which was located over 45 minutes from our house. And I didn't want to drive my own child to that. And I, I had worked in many districts, but I knew that here in Cedar Rapids, my own child would benefit tremendously from attending Cedar Rapids Public High School with exceptional arts programs that I benefited from, and many of my friends and colleagues have benefited from. I also wanted my own child to live in a community that doesn't bat an eye when a kid picks up a trombone at halftime and marches in the halftime show in their football uniform. That is not the case in other parts of our country, and we really need to not take that for granted here in Cedar Rapids. I know the focus of the new magnet approach is career readiness, which is why the full spectrum of arts offerings must continue to be offered at each high school and available for every single child. I know you're educators, so you know this, but I'm just going to remind us, this in-service day and over the weekend, I heard the marching band from my house. So if we want kids with the intrinsic motivation to show up on weekends, and holidays, and summers, those leaders who say, I want to be at school, those are your band kids. Those are your show choir kids. If you want to create career-ready people who can make something out of nothing on a budget, go talk to your theater tech team. They'll make it happen for you. If you want workers who attune to fine details, who are careful observers, and who can use materials in innovative ways, like our engineers at Rockwell Collins and other engineering companies around here, go to your art department. You're going to find the keenest observers in your building. If you want those who have poise in a job interview, who are comfortable with ambiguity, who can improvise when things go wrong, those are your theater kids. If you want to see some incredible mathematical patterning and cognitive skills, go sit with your jazz band. You'll be astounded at the way that those kids can maintain mathematical patterns in their head. It's time for me to go, but I hope that the arts will be considered strongly as that program develops, and I also have the question of how teachers will know what changes are being made to the arts curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now give the meeting over to Dr. Grover to share her superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, President Garlock, and all of our directors, for the opportunity to bring some updates and insights here during my superintendent's report at the Board meeting. We appreciate you having it as an agenda item. So that's an excellent segue, actually, into my first topic here tonight, is to just share, again, just how excited, thrilled, and fortunate we are as we move into our college and career readiness work, and the vision that has been created here within our organization, and really, a great deal of work happening within our Office of Academics, as well with our College and Career Ready Task Force, which includes a number of business partners, higher education, our teachers. We even have students that also participate there, as well as parents. And with all of that vision work happening, we were awarded a $15 million Magnet Schools Assistance Program grant from the Department of Ed. We are one of only 12 districts in the country to receive this honor. This grant will support the launch of our future-ready college and career academies at Jefferson and Washington High Schools. It just really appreciate our students having state-of-the-art technology, industry equipment, hands-on student learning experiences, and staff professional development. These academies will definitely empower our students to explore their passions as they prepare to enter into the world, whether that's through college and career, the workforce, just life, as well as in our community. We do intend to have all of the arts programs to continue at all of our high schools. I actually have the list of all the academies right here. And so, we are not segmenting any of our arts program into one academy where that's all they focus on. So we will continue to have all of our programs, even now, with Cedar View, our students can still participate in extracurriculars, and we certainly intend for that to continue. I just want to, just double click that we honor the arts here in Cedar Rapids Community School District. It is a big part of our culture. Just last week, I was leaving a task force meeting with facilities, actually, and we actually had one of our arts teachers that serves on that committee, and we were just, I was just thanking him for his voice, being a part of the meeting, so that we can continue to make sure that we keep an eye out on the arts. Next up, as we move forward, thinking about being awarded money here in Cedar Rapids, right over in our Transportation Department, we received $98,000 from the Iowa Workforce Development Center for entry-level driver training. Each quarter, the Cedar Rapids Community School District has submitted a portion of our training costs for reimbursement, and so we are so fortunate to have that extra funding so that we can continue to keep drivers available to transport our students to help support their educational needs. I do want to take the opportunities to put in a plug that we are still hiring bus drivers here in Cedar Rapids Community School District. We have bus routes that run from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, or 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. You can work both the AM and the PM shifts, or just one. Scott, he is very flexible. He will work with you, get you all of the training, find a schedule that will work for you. So as we say, all vehicles come help drive the future here in Cedar Rapids Community School District. Oh, and if you like athletics, activities, band concerts, football games, you name it, you can also drive the bus for school field trips and competitions. It's a great way to stay engaged with our students. Speaking of engagement, the Cedar Rapids Community School District, we are excited to announce that the Cedar Rapids Community School District has been selected to join the 2425 League of Innovative Schools. This is a significant achievement for our school district, recognizing our leadership in education, commitment to equity and excellence, and our innovative vision for student learning. We are one of only 150 districts nationwide, and one or two in the state of Iowa. Yeah, I have quite a bit of report tonight, so bear with me, so thank you. I would also like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Carla Hogan, here tonight. Carla, everybody wave at Carla. She was honored last week at the Iowa Association of School Business Officials Conference in Des Moines for her remarkable 25 years of service. Carla has helped to support our district through some turbulent times that call for definitely a focus on finances, and even as we have transitioned from our ESTA dollars, Carla definitely keeps her eye on the money, but she keeps her mind on the students, I must say. And she's always looking for collaborative approaches, and we really appreciate that within our CFO. Not only is she our Chief Financial Officer, but Carla is certainly a leader among her peers. She has great influence here at our department in training other people, so that we're making sure that we're growing our own talent and keeping people engaged. We are just so fortunate to have you in our school district, and well-deserved recognition and for your eight years of dedication to the Cedar Rapids Community School District. Would you all help me celebrate Carla tonight? Well, speaking of honors, we have wonderful people that are serving within our school district, as well as in our community. We also want to take a moment to highlight and congratulate Director Jennifer Borcheting for being recognized as one of Iowa's most influential business leaders by the Corridor Media Group. She will be featured in the statewide Iowa 500 Magazine, which highlights 500 of Iowa's She will be featured in the statewide Iowa 500 Magazine, which highlights 500 of Iowa's top business leaders, and will be distributed across the state in 2025. Another well-deserved honor for our leaders here in Cedar Rapids Community School District. Let's celebrate Director Borcheting. Okay, on to the work at hand that is underway. This is, during these reports, I try to take an opportunity to make sure that we are also keeping our public up to date with things that are happening in real time in our school district. Last week, the Cedar Rapids Community School District's Future-Ready Facilities Task Force Committee held its third meeting of the year at the Pierce Elementary School. The committee is composed of around eighty community members, parents, and district staff. We reviewed data on building capacities, community growth, operating costs, enrollment, and facilities concerns. A lot of rich information. I do want to give a shout-out to SHIve Hattery, the MA Plus Group. They spend a lot of time pulling a lot of data, working with folks in our community, and just really, our team here, and just really proud of the transparent information that was shared with our community. And we encourage our task force members to make sure that they're out in the community talking to other people about it, sharing information as we move this work forward. The next task force meeting will be on November the 12th. If you want to keep up with it, you can follow along with the minutes on our website. As we are moving forward with our college and career readiness work, it doesn't just happen at the high school. It's all about what happens all the way from PK through 12. And tonight, you will see on the agenda that we are looking to incorporate an exciting opportunity at the McKinley Steam Academy. We will soon be constructing a new immersive medical science laboratory classroom. This renovated space will provide unique opportunities for students in grade six through eight to explore the healthcare field, and PEPAL funds will be used to renovate a classroom space for this new program. We also just want to give a nod to our high schools for their homecoming celebrations. The student and staff at Kennedy and Washington High Schools celebrate their homecoming. They've celebrated it. I actually had a chance to see some of Washington's in action. Their homecoming festivities are featured, themed dress-up days, you know, football games, all of that. We also had our board members out. We have some very engaged board members. They were also out for the fun. Thank you to Justin for driving our board members safely, and also, special thanks to McGrath for giving us a vehicle to ride in. And speaking of our board members, okay. So, our Cedar Rapids School District, once again, we partnered with the Monarch Research Project to offer district employees up to three free trees to help restore the tree canopy lost during the derecho. This year, nearly 1,200 trees were ordered by our staff members. And I believe, since this program started, that the Cedar Rapids Community School District has planted 6,195 trees over the past four years. That is pretty special. So thank you to our board members, Chris Gates, for leading this effort, and to everyone, all of our employees that are part of this special opportunity across our community. Professional Learning Days, on September 30th, the district held its first all-staff professional learning day. Work groups were spread all across the district. Some completed mandatory state trainings, others learned about the district's new safety protocol. This is something that's new this year, so thank you to our calendar team that worked on this to make it possible. We're all learners here in Cedar Rapids Community School District, and our next all-staff professional learning will take place on October 21st. So I also just want to provide a quick update on the work being done to ensure our students have a safe and secure learning environment. Again, just want to be able to share it out with our community as we reinforce our commitment to safety, as well as on our protocols. This fall, our students and staff have been learning about the protocols. Our police pals, our school resource officer, along with Janessa Carr, our Safe and Secure Learning Administrator, have been teaching students and staff our new safety protocols on hold, secure, and lockdown, along with run, hide, fight. The information is available on our website. Safety posters with these new protocols are also being placed in every classroom. Additionally, our school administrators have started completing their regular tornado and fire drills with our students. Our Transportation Department will start bus evacuation training and drills next week. We have also set up our emergency response teams throughout the district so that we can have timely communication in regards to any emergencies. So speaking of safety, recently, there have been numerous rumors circulating about potential threats at our schools. We want to reassure you that we take all reports seriously and actively investigate them all. In any credible threats, if any credible threats are found, we will immediately activate our emergency response protocols to ensure the safety of students and staff. We work closely with the Cedar Rapids Police Department for all safety threats. In these situations, transparency is incredibly important. We, the school district, will notify and provide updates to staff and families as soon as it is safe to do so. We ask that you only rely on communication through the Cedar Rapids Community School District and the Cedar Rapids Police Department for accurate and official updates, as they report to the media as well. This will help to prevent any confusion and rumors that could cause concern and ensure that you have the correct information. This is so important. If you or your child ever hears or sees something suspicious or concerning outside of school hours, please contact the Cedar Rapids Police Department directly. That number is 319-286-5491. We want you to be empowered with this information. Do not hesitate. They will communicate with administrators and take immediate action to investigate and handle the situation. You can also report safety concerns using the Iowa Safe and Sound website or app, which shares reports with both the Cedar Rapids Police Department and our school administrators. We encourage students to provide evidence where possible, like screenshots, photos, or videos with their reports to help us respond quickly and efficiently. For more information, please visit our website. Ask your school administrators, contact us here. Let's be safe together. As you can see, my report here tonight, it reflects our strategic plan, our core pillars, our three top priority areas for the school year, student achievement, safe and secure learning environment, and staff engagement. Thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. I always appreciate a long superintendent's report. That means we have a lot going on and a lot to celebrate, so thank you for your report and for your leadership in all those initiatives. Do we have any directors who have board reports tonight?
Yes.
Director Roundtree.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start off with the report from the Recruitment and Retention Core Board Committee. So we met last week, and it was on October the 9th. The topic is still retention is the new recruitment. We looked at attrition numbers across the district and work groups. We were able to see that the largest attrition occurs within the first five years in the organization. We then discussed the qualitative data from exit interviews for teachers, either learning or consider, I'm sorry, yes, either leaving or considering leaving. Lastly, we revisited the data from last year's state surveys and examined the largest pain points for our current staff, or from their vantage point, why people have divulged that they were, that they had, they were considering leaving. Did y'all get that? Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we used this conversation to do some strategic thinking about the next steps for the further data dives, and how to better interact, to better impact attrition. I don't know why I'm tongue-tied today. Okay, so this is great work that is happening with the retention and recruitment team, and it was a really, really good meeting. The HR team is really, really doing a good job with trying to collect this data to try to see what the issues are with that. That's a very important subject that we all care about very deeply, and so ongoing conversation is happening, and so just stay tuned for things to come with that. Also, real quick before I pass it on to Director Borcheting, I want to say a heartfelt thank you to our community. We passed that PEPAL with a 72%. Can we get a hand clap for that? That was amazing! I really want y'all to do a hand clap and a hoo-hoo, because how awesome is that? And we are just so grateful that our community really showed up and did their thing with that. Because of that, we can go ahead and keep up with the maintenance on our buildings and work on some very much-needed projects. And so because of that, our community backed us and supported us on that. We can get that done. And you can keep up with that information and keep track with it. Just go ahead and visit our website and stay in touch that way, okay? But again, thank you, community. You guys rock. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's give them another clap. Done?
I'm done, all right.
Director Borcheting.
Well, that's a, that's a hard act to follow. I'm just going to start there. So I'm reporting on the Policy and Compliance Core Committee. The most recent meeting of the Superintendent's Core Committee for Policy and Compliance Oversight was held Thursday, September 24th, 2024. Myself, Director Timinsky, Elizabeth Jacoby, and Lynda Resack were present. The committee addressed the current status of legal challenges to, number one, the Iowa statute on curriculum and library materials, and, number two, recent amendments to the federal Title IX regulations. The committee also took note that recently, the Iowa Association of School Boards issued model provisions concerning student use of cell phones. The district's Director of Student Services is working with other subject matter experts to consider various possibilities for a uniform set of requirements across schools within the district. The community, I'm sorry, the committee next reviewed three provisions of the Board's manual, Regulation 606.4, covering proper information sharing between the district and law enforcement, Regulation 400.4, concerning district students getting credit for instruction at post-secondary institutions, and Policy 402, addressing the district's approach to controversial issues. All of these provisions align with state law and guidance from the Iowa State Association of School Boards, and no changes were recommended at this time. Aside from this work, at the September 24th meeting, the committee continues discussions around ensuring the Board Manual's provisions are reflective of and consistent with one another, as well as the law and best practices. As a member of IASB, the district receives support and resources from the Iowa Association of School Boards with this focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board reports. Okay, let's move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items the director would like to pull for comment, question, or separate vote?
Yeah, I'd like to just make a quick note regarding, let's look, 15. So this is the agreement with SHIve Hattery for their architecture and engineering consultancy. Just offering a bit more insight on that process and the details and structure of that meeting and that, that decision-making. So we had a committee of nine people that were a part of that decision-making. This were, was comprised of district officials, teachers, parents, community members, both principals, and we were able to interview five different consultants that were quite impressive. It was a reminder of the incredible talent we have in this town in the architectural and engineering space. And that was for, these firms will be working, you know, on the project with Hoover and Van Buren. There was a scoring guide that was used to rate each of these firms and evaluate them as we moved through this process, and ultimately, we selected SHIve Hattery. I just wanted to reiterate, you know, we, we were really lucky to have so many diverse perspectives in the room that day. It really matters when we're making this type of decision-making that we have those perspectives and that input. So want to just say, you know, it's very foundational to the process. Thank you to all those who were coordinating that, and thank you to the teachers and parents and leadership that was in the room that day. I'm really looking forward to not only making sure that we have top-tier learning environments, but that they feel like home for our teachers and our students in those spaces. So, yeah, just wanted to make mention of the structure of that process.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that information. Any other comments?
I would like to make one comment. Dr. Grover alluded to the work that, the project that's on the consent agenda for the McKinley Health Sciences Career Academy. As a former biology teacher, it just, it makes me so happy to see those opportunities provided to, to our students at that grade level. Kids come into the sciences and always say, "Why do we have to learn this?" And right there in front of them, they will have real-life applications for why they have to learn this. I think McKinley is so perfectly situated, right in the heart of the mid-quarter. It's just, there are so many partnerships, so many partnership potentials in that, in that area. So really happy to see that happening at McKinley Middle School.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move the agenda of Monday, October 4th. Apologies.
Move the consent to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
I'll signify by aye. President Garlock.
Aye. We have four items under administration tonight. The first item is a high-level overview, followed by the approval of the Emergency Operations Plan. I'll pass the mic off to Janessa Carr for her presentation.
Good evening, Board of Directors. My name is Janessa Carr, and I'm the Safe and Secure Learning Environment Admin for the school district. Tonight, I wanted to take the chance to give you just a high-level overview of our EOP, also known as our Emergency Operations Plan. The reason that we're just giving a high-level overview is due to some of the confidential things within our Emergency Operations Plan. So, for example, included in that is our neighborhood relocation centers, and so we wouldn't want to publicize that, and so that's why we're doing the high-level overview. Some of the other high-level changes would be our emergency protocol term updates. So we're no longer other days of like soft lockdown, partial lockdown. We really want to make sure that we're super clear in our buildings about what a lockdown means. And so our three really important emergency protocols that we'll be moving forward with is hold, secure, and lockdown. There is a plan in place to make sure that all of our staff and students know what that language is. That language has also been vetted through Cedar Rapids Police Department, Hiawatha Police Department as well, and that is currently being taught district-wide. Once again, our neighborhood relocation centers are updated every single year, so in addition to that, anytime there's a building admin change, that's another update that we need to do in our EOP. And then another protocol change for this school year is that we are making sure that building principals are notifying our area emergency response team. So before the protocol, I would say it was not as efficient, and so as we're always trying to work toward continuously improving that communication piece in the middle of an emergency, we now have principals contact their area emergency response team. So the area emergency response team is broken up into Area 1, Area 2, Area 3, and included in that notification is always myself, so Safe and Secure Learning, Chad Schumacher from Building and Operations, Scott Wing from Transportation, our Chief of Staff, Orshoya, I'm sorry if I do not say your last name correctly, and then Justin Schaefer as well for communication. So anytime there's an emergency, they make sure that they notify those specific people, and then each of those people within that emergency response team has a role. And so it just makes it so that if we, if I get notification of an emergency, I'm able to go to the building and help to kind of command and help with that situation, and then we have communication, who's able to draft something for the media. Scott Wing is able to tell our transportation staff that they do not go to the building, and then Chad Schumacher is able to pull in if, if a glass is broken, right? Let's say a student runs into a glass wall. So Chad is going to talk to his people and make sure that the glass is fixed, right? So there's just a whole process, and we have everyone on that team that needs to be notified. So it's just been really, I've noticed a huge difference this school year in how quickly we're being notified and how quickly we're able to assist. So it's been a huge improvement in our system. And I also needed to read, "The purpose of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Emergency Operations Plan, otherwise known as our EOP, is to comply with Iowa Code, Chapter 280, Section 30, and it outlines the responsibilities, duties of employees, parents, and guardians during, during an emergency."
Thank you, Janessa.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you for the constant communication. I know as a parent, you're wanting to make sure that you can communicate this to your child at home and have those conversations in the home, so...
So I think, from what I've seen, that there's been a lot of communication with parents in outlining what this means, these transitions, and so that's super important. Thank you.
Thank you. That's one of our biggest goals, is to get a lot better at that. So I'm glad that you see the difference.
Other comments or questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
I did have one more thought. As we're thinking about just rolling this out, so in the schools, I guess, hold, secure, lockdown, you know, having those conversations at different grade levels looks different. How are we tailoring that, those conversations or that learning to each of the grade levels?
That's a great question. So currently, our presentations are broken down by grade level. So we have preschool through second grade, so they have their own presentation. And then we have third grade through fifth grade, they have their own presentation. And then 6 through 12. And so what we're finding is that we don't want to differentiate too much between what's happening in middle school and high school, because they're all like on social media together. They're all, that risk factor is really high at both of those levels. And so we want to make sure that like theirs is pretty much the exact same, but under that, it's broken down by grade.
Can you speak a little, were you done?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. Can you, while we have you there, can you speak a little bit about the Crisis Go implementation?
Yep. Yep, so I can kind of share a quick update with Crisis Go. So we kind of have five steps highlighted here, and I'm so glad I have the sheet with me. So August 20th, we send out communications to all of our staff in the school district to make sure that they're downloading that Crisis Go app. Everyone, it really is live technically right now, and so staff are free to download that. They can sign in with their same sign-in that they use when they sign into their email. September 27th of this school year, we sent out a communication to parents, letting them know that they will be able to subscribe to Crisis Go updates. And so parents will not be downloading the app, they're just going to subscribe to their child's building so that when they do get a notification, so that when a building goes into like hold, then that parent will receive a notification. They will not receive notification yet, but the hope is that they will begin to start subscribing, and so we can, so that they can be subscribed far before we're actually live, if that makes sense. October 30th, our plan is to train our district emergency response team with Crisis Go. The Crisis Go team helping us virtually with that. And then November 17th, we're going to be training all building principals on how to use Crisis Go. And then December of this school year through May, is we're rolling it out to buildings. So we want to be really smart about how we're rolling this out. We do not want to roll it out too fast, because I'm telling everyone Crisis Go really is like the emergency equivalent of Infinite Campus. So we don't want to move too fast on this. It's very simple, small steps, but we want to make sure that we know how to use it this year. That's the biggest, especially in a district of this size. So we need to be smart about the rollout.
Thank you, that's good. I love how detailed you are with getting this done. So that helps, you know, ease any angst around it. And y'all are doing good work, so thank you so much. This is important.
Yep, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Janessa.
Thank you.
With no other questions, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution to construct two new elementary school buildings on the Hoover Elementary School and Van Buren Elementary School sites. Do we have any discussion or questions on this item? Do we have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote?
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
I'll signify with aye. President Garla?
Aye. Our next item is another resolution, appointing paying escrow, registrar, and transfer agent, and approving the agreement authorizing the execution of the same, and approving the tax-exempt certificate and continuing disclosure certificate. Are there any questions on this item for Carla? Do we have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
I'll signify with aye. President Garla?
Aye. The last resolution is authorizing, provide issuance, and securing the payment of school infrastructure, sales service, and use tax revenue bonds. Any questions on this for Carla? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
I'll signify with aye. President Garla?
Aye. Lastly, Carla will present the fiscal year 2024 financial highlights.
Good evening, Board of Directors. Thank you for allowing me the time tonight to tell you about our fiscal year 24 financial This first slide is our statement of revenue and expenditure for all of our funds. The total revenue in FY '23 was almost $326 million, while in FY '24, it was $339 million. In FY '23, our expenses were $307 million, while in FY '24, it was $328 million. For the revenue, 20 million of this was the Trailside Bonds that were issued in FY '24. In FY '24, ESAR was $9.4 million, and this was primarily in the general fund. We'll do a deeper dive into the specific funds further in the presentation. Our next slide shows our general fund summary. Our general fund is our operating fund, and we had a $2.7 million surplus in FY '24. This is due to the district using ESAR funds to cover allocated expenses and growing categorical fund balances. The annual reestimated budget in the spring of 2024 showed the district having a surplus of $510,000. I will explain this surplus in detail in a minute. The prior and current year-to-date revenues are closely aligned, but the district spent $1.2 million more in FY '24. This is primarily in supplies and property. I would like to take some time to mention the new grants the district received in FY '24, including the Stronger Communities Grant, which is being used to fund the Safe and Secure Learning Environment Initiatives that Janessa just talked about, two Beyond the Bell Grants at $150,000 each. It was the first year for City View and the second year for our first federal MSAP grant. Notice how I said first federal MSAP grant. We also funded instructional empowerment and the new CKLA curriculum. This slide shows our general fund expenditure. Off to the right-hand side, you'll see it in the dollar values, and then you'll also see it in a pie chart. The salaries and benefits are almost 78% of our general fund expenditures, as shown with the blue and orange slices. And our other purchased services is next, at 8% in the royal blue. Our general fund historical summary is shown on this slide. Our actual revenue and expenditure comparison is shown here for FY 2019 to FY 2024. Notice that pre-COVID, the district ran a deficit of $1 million in FY 2019 and $4 million in FY 2020. ESAR funding has been used in fiscal years '21, '22, and '23 to create a surplus. In FY '24, our surplus was just over $2.7 million. I will explain this surplus on the next slide. We currently have almost $46 million fund balance, which is 2.34 months of fund balance to carry us through the summer when we don't receive state aid. So general funds changes in categorical balances. As I showed you on the previous slide, we had $2.7 million in surplus. This is accounted for in categorical balances. Our reserve for prepaid's increased significantly due to our audit and full implementation of GASBE 96. GASBE 96 is subscription-based information technology arrangements known as SPITIS. So we have to account for our prepaid's for subscription, any subscription-based technology. We also had increases of over $300,000 each in teacher leadership and teacher PD. These amounts will be used this year to cover instructional empowerment implementation. The statewide voluntary preschool increased over $228,000, and this funding is being used to maintain the full-day preschool at Truman Early Learning Center for FY '25. So those categorical balances amount to $1.5 million of the 2.7. And remember, the district also closed the Child Care Fund in FY '24, increasing our general fund balance by another $1.4 million. This is allocated in the transfers in, and so that gives us $2.9 million in general fund changes in categorical balances, and we had a $2.7 million surplus. The next slide shows our unspent balance report. Our estimated unspent authorized budget increased from $29.8 million, as shown at the bottom green bar, in FY '23, to $36.4 million estimated for FY '24. The things I want you to notice on this slide is there is an estimated $1.7 million in yellow. This is our early, our English learner SBRC supplemental amount for excess cost. The information in the portal shows the $1.7 million, but we haven't finalized those numbers with the Department of Education yet. The approval for this modified supplement, however, will come to the board in November for approval, once the application is complete. We also have $3.2 million in blue. The next line down is our SBRC additional allowable growth for on-time funding. That was improved in December last year, of which $1.4 million was for increased enrollment, $356,000 for English-language learners beyond five years, and $1.5 million for additional open enrolled out. The $9 million in blue is our FY '24 special education deficit, which you approved at our last board meeting. The $39.5 million for other miscellaneous income in blue, and the $234 million of expenditures comes directly from our FY '24 state reporting. All the other numbers are pre-populated by the Iowa Department of Management. This slide shows our unspent authorized budget and solvency history. Our unspent authorized budget ratio for FY '24 was 15%. Notice that the Iowa Association of School Boards shows an acceptable level is between 7 and 17%, and so we're right within the acceptable range. Our annual maximum unspent authorized budget used was 95.7%. This number was only 95% because I showed how we increased our categorical reserves on the two slides prior. Our solvency ratio is 18%. This calculation is our unassigned fund balance minus AEA flow-through divided by our total revenue. Notice the rate has grown significantly since FY '20. This is due to ESAR and staffing shortages. This calculation is also used in our standards and pores ratings calls, and that is the reason for the district maintaining our A-plus rating from our most recent rating call in September of 2024, that was used for the bonds that we just finished the sale on for $15 million for CCR tonight. This slide shows our student activity historical summary. Not too much to really talk about on this. In FY '23, we had a $135,000 deficit. This is coming, still coming out of COVID, and we, the district has stabilized and had a $56,000 surplus this year. The next slide shows our management fund. Management remembers for insurance, insurance deductibles, early retirement incentive payments, and unemployment. Our management fund grew from approximately $11 million to $16.8 million. This balance will help offset increased wind hail deductibles for our property insurance. Our FY '25 wind hail deductible for all of our buildings in a catastrophic event like the derecho would be over $5 million. We are building a reserve to help offset the current insurance deductible buydown. The district is currently not participating in the equipment and maintenance breakdown insurance program for FY '25, but did participate in FY '24 with $1.125 million in premiums. And as you know, and you see catastrophic events happening all over the United States right now, that will continue to possibly drive up our insurance premiums. Our SAVE is the Secure Advanced Vision for Education, or the statewide penny sales tax. And the $3.6 million of the $1.7 million surplus belongs to the Trailside Project, which we are currently closing out. That building was completed and opened in August of 2024. And remember, the SAVE funds are currently being used to build our new elementaries, of which Hoover, Van Buren, and Harrison are slated to be our next buildings that are being replaced. And then we talked tonight about Pebble, which is our fiscal plan and equipment levy, and that grew by $3 million. Something interesting in FY '24, we had the Taft and Harding domes, and those cost approximately $896,000 to repair. So we use the balance in the Pebble Fund to do things that happen and come up as the years go. We also, and this was in FY '25, this is our final year of the projects for the 10-year Pebble Promise. Next is debt service. The fund balance in debt service is restricted carryover for future payments of bond debt. The nutrition fund. The nutrition fund had a deficit of $2.9 million. This can be explained because our employee benefits is overstated because of our net IPRs pension liability of $3.2 million compared to FY '23, which is $532,000. We have to do a calculation to calculate what our pension liability would be if we fully funded IPRs. And so that offsets the $2.93 million deficit. So our actual deficit was only $491,000, which they're using by spending their previous year surpluses. Next is our Child Care Fund, and we closed our Child Care Fund in FY '24, like I talked about previously. So we transferred out the $1.4 million balance to the general fund. Does anybody have any questions?
Board, questions?
I just appreciate.
You're in review.
It's a lot of work.
It is.
It's a lot of understanding of finances. Just based on some conversations that Director Garla and myself were able to have at the federal level, I'm just wondering if there is a projected continuation of deficit for nutrition?
Um, I don't think so. We're hoping that we'll level out now coming out of COVID. You know, we were receiving so much money in federal money to help offset the cost of meals. We did move Washington to a CEP school this year and said that they would break even if they could serve 150 more meals every day, and they're serving over 300 more. if they could serve 150 more meals every day, and they're serving over 300 more. So yeah, kids are getting to eat for free. It's wonderful. So they also are serving snacks at the middle schools now, so they are making some changes to help try to offset some of the deficit spending they had coming out of COVID.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. Every time I'm trying to write down a question, you then answered it, so everything was very thorough. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carla, I can see why you won an award. Yeah. The mastery of all these numbers is amazing, so thank you so much for everything you do to keep us on the right path financially. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda is a closed session to discuss the purchase, sale, and use of real estate. Do we have a motion to move into a closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borcherding?
Aye.
I'm saying aye. I'll signify by aye. I'm sorry. President Garlock?
Aye. The board will now move into closed session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. With no further business, we stand adjourned at 6:39. Thank you, everyone.